City Council, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
All right, Stingleyton.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And how many times can I forget that before I get fired? All right, item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pritchett. Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we have an agenda. Item five is a consent calendar. This is a notice to the public. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion and be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second Stingleyton, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Here, yes, sorry.
Erickson.
That's your fault.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson. Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, the consent calendar has been adopted. Next up is item six, Council Committee Reports, item six A, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day with us virtually.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had seven items on the agenda tonight, first of which was a event parking lot closure application for the Armed Forces Freedom Festival. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the event application with the conditions noted on the act application and recommend applicant contact neighboring businesses regarding the event and parking lot closure. I so move.
Second, Erickson.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item two was an event street closure application for Smiles on the Sippy. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the event application under the condition noted, conditions noted on the application, without alcohol and coordinating with the Crow Wing County Safety.
Emergency services.
Emergency services, that's the next one.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number three is a construction and maintenance cost share agreement with Crow Wing County for 2022 Kiuna Lakes State Trail. And motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached agreement as proposed, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Want me to explain this one a little bit? This is just a chunk of, this is a chunk of trail along 13th Street, basically saying that the city is responsible for maintenance and any, any costs involved with the trail, though it's part of the right of way for the county road.
Good news. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number four is approval of plans and speculations and authorizing bidding for the improvement 19-02 West segment of the Kiuna Lakes State Trail. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the plans and specifications and authorize bidding of this work, and the bid opening date would be May 25th. I so move.
Second, Pritchett.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number five is a construction materials and testing agreement with Braun Intertec for the improvement 19-02 Kiuna Lakes State Trail NP Center segment. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached proposal from Braun Intertec in the proposal amount not to exceed $6,329 for materials testing on improvement 19-02 Kiuna Lakes State Trail NP Center segment, and I so move.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number six is a review of the classification of land to nonconservation and future sale of tax forfeited lands. Motion coming out of committee is to concur with nonconservation status of both parcels 412-415-26 and 413-608-99 so that they may be placed on the county tax forfeit land sale. I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our seventh and final item of the night was our first time giving direction on code enforcement. This is the, the new code, Section 320, that we just passed, finalized last meeting. There are five different properties that came up on this meeting. A lot of these have been problem properties or issues with the city since going back to 2016, 2017. Basically, there's an item on your packet, there's a memo, and that lists the recommendations, that is what we ended up going with for the motion. So if you wanted more information on any of those before I made a motion, Mr. President, that's up to you.
I'm okay with what's in the packet unless somebody has a question on any of them. Please proceed, Chairman O'Day.
All right, motion coming out of committee was to recommend, was to approve recommendations from the memo, and I so move.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any questions? Comments or concerns? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes. Mr. Chair.
End of report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Johnson, item 6B, Personal and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you following along at home, please flip to page number 330 in your council packet. We have 12 items on our agenda. The first one is a consideration of bids for the historic water tower rehabilitation project. And the motion is to award phase one of the historic water tower rehab project to High Tech Construction in the amount of $385,000 and authorizing signatures on the agreement with High Tech with the Water Tower Committee to use their funds raised to cover the overages in the contract, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had the bid opening, it came in about $61,000 higher than we expected, but the Water Tower Committee does have that much money that they have fundraised, and they're going to use that to cover the difference. So the city is still committed to our match that we agreed to in the past of $162,043.
Any further?
And we're getting a roof.
Okay, only a roof, Mr. Chair.
Only a roof.
No windows? No metal structure repair on side? Nothing like that?
No stucco.
Don't we have enough for the windows? And the stairs?
That would be a question for Paul or the mayor.
I mean, I, I, Mr. Mayor, can you answer that? My understanding is we do, from what I heard Thursday, yes?
I would actually refer to Paul on that.
Paul Skogan, 13347 Baxter, Minnesota. Hidden button.
Thank you. Paul Skogan, 13347 Norway Drive, Baxter, Minnesota. I'm the president of the Water Tower Committee. And yes, Mr. Bevins, you're right, there is something like $120,000 in reserve funds, but we would like to hold off on that because there is another project, phase two, which is going to be the stucco part of that thing. And I talked to Mike Lovato, who is our architect, and there's going to be a proposal coming from him to me for a study on the stucco of roughly $45,000, somewhere in there. And so as part of that, I was hoping to use, again, a matching fund from the city, a matching fund from the Water Tower Committee, going to the Historical Society to get a matching grant from them for the study. And once we get that back, and then we'll go with what that recommendation is to repair the stucco, and I would like to use the rest of the funds from the city as a matching grant for that.
Mr. Chair, may I continue? I, I, I thought phase two was the windows and the steps.
Phase two, as part of the, the grant process, yes. Phase one and phase two.
So we're skipping phase two and going to phase three?
Or phase two A.
Two B.
Two B, okay.
I'm just, Paul, I'm going to be direct here, I'm concerned, we're going to put the roof on, that's going to be great, I'm going to support this motion because we have to put the roof on.
Correct.
That being said, I am concerned that the windows and the stairs, and I've been in there recently, and I'll be blunt, the stairs.
Are.
Are troublesome.
You could have been more blunt than that.
Yeah, that was pretty delicately blunt.
Are disastrous. I would not want to climb them.
What the, what the committee, what we had talked about doing within our proposal, and Paul, you can help me out on this, was all that was going to be done to the stairs was a structural integrity to sandblast the stairs, get rid of the asbestos paint, and then repaint the stairs, was part of phase two, am I correct? And the windows, even though some of them do leak, but the bid for the stairs, I believe, came in somewhere around $75,000, somewhere in there. And also the bid for the windows came in at somewhere around $75,000, and those are nonessential parts of the water tower at this time, according to the structure report dated 10 years ago, three years ago, two years ago.
Okay, so the, the, the person who dies on the stair when the stairs all fall off may not think so, but, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm certainly going to support the motion, I just have concerns, particularly with the stairs. That's how you get up to the bowl.
Correct.
And second.
Yep, that's, end of my questions.
Okay, well, we have the motion, I have no other, I have no other discussion.
Okay, that's right, so we have a motion, so, Mr. Mayor Bedeau.
I was just simply going to say that the Water Tower Committee is just trying to be as responsible with the funds as possible. We have funds that we've received from the community as donations. Our goal is to use those funds as quickly as possible so that we can actively be fixing the water tower with the funds that we have raised to fix the water tower. The additional costs on the stairs and on the windows came in a lot higher than we, what we were expecting, and our goal is to continue to use the city funds as matching funds because we think we'll have a better chance having some funds in reserve for the larger projects that are coming up. The stucco is going to be very expensive.
Correct.
And our concern is that when we're going and trying to raise that funding, there's still a timeline that we are uncertain what happens. If a large chunk of that stucco gives way, and by a large chunk, I don't mean the size of a basketball, I mean a large chunk of the stucco, it puts us in a position where then liability-wise, we are needing to go after that part of it, and I would rather that we had funds available for it than be concerned, be concerned with the windows at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a second. Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to ratify the hiring of 2022 interns and summer temps, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of the 2022 interns and summer temporary employees as presented on the attached listing on page 350 of your packet, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingleyton. Any discussion on the summer temporary employees? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up, we have a police officer resignation, and the motion is to accept Officer Steven Nysely's resignation effective March 31st, 2022, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, that puts us at 24 officers of the 27 goal. We've kind of been hovering 24, 25 this year, as was predicted by, by myself. Thank you.
I wanted to mention that you are the greatest.
Don't tell that, we got to live with them.
Give the dog a bone. Any further discussion?
If you have a board in the back.
Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
All right, the next one is a resignation attempt from the city engineer, public works director, Paul Sandy. And the motion is a long one, if you're following along in the packet, it has three recommended actions, we did it all in one motion. So the motion is to accept with regret the resignation of city engineer, public works director, Paul Sandy, effective May 6th, 2022, to approve the attached revised city engineer, public works job description as presented, and designate council members O'Day and Johnson as council representatives to a work group to oversee the city engineer, public works director hiring process, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingleyton. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
So Paul Sandy has accepted a job in the private sector and is, is leaving us, so we're accepting his resignation. We, when the work group of O'Day and myself and Jennifer and Chris met to discuss the community development director, we did briefly discuss the job description for public works director two, and that's why we kind of, that's why we recommended putting myself and Mike on the public works director hiring committee because we can just hit both of those job positions as we go through it on the summer with just one meeting instead of doubling staff's meeting times.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is an MOA for acting community development director, and the motion is to approve the attached memorandum of agreement between the city of Brainerd, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Number 31 Union, and James Kramvik for Kramvik to be appointed as the acting community development director effective April 23rd, 2022, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Okay, next up is an update and some action on the community development director hiring process, and the action is, again, three recommended actions, we all did in one motion, and the motion is to approve the attached community development director position profile and hiring timeline, to approve the attached revised job descriptions for the community development director, the building official, and assistant planner, and to authorize the work group to continue to oversee the community development director hiring process, and to designate council members O'Day and Johnson to serve as council representatives on the community development director interview panel, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingleyton. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Just, this is, we met, we updated the position, we divided some things out, we pulled in some things from public works, gave some of the other employees more work to do. I think the best thing we have with this updated position description is the cover letter. I hope our candidates can understand when it says, hiring range is this range, pay range is this range, and it's two separate lines now, so maybe the candidates will know what they can possibly get hired on as, and not expect to get the top performance base pay as their hiring salary.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman. Get in the hang of this yet?
I am.
All right.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson. O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
The next item is approval of a change order for the zoning code update project, and the motion is to approve the attached change order in the amount of $5,000 for the completion of the zoning code update project, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
So we had the $90,000 contract with Swanson Hascamp Consulting. It was pretty much all on timeline and good under 90, but when the council rejected the final zoning code, it added a little bit more work for planning and zoning and for the consultant, and that's going to cost us $5,000.
Fantastic. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Next up is a consideration of consulting services with Swanson Hascamp Consulting, and the motion is to approve the attached proposal for Swanson Hascamp Consulting for as-needed planning and zoning consulting services in an amount not to exceed $10,000, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingleyton. Chairman Johnson.
This, there's a couple reasons, good reasons, on why we should do this contract, and one, it's an as-needed planning, so if something real complex comes up and James wants a second set of eyes to look at it, he can reach out to Jennifer and have her assist. And secondly, with David Chansky leaving and Kramvik being the community development director and assistant city planner, he's going to need all the support and help he can get, so having Jennifer on call is, will be good to support him.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I do both the items in one motion?
Sure.
All right.
Bless you.
So this is a consideration of Brainerd Community Action request for agreement amendment already. And the motion is to authorize amending the agreement between the city of Brainerd and Brainerd Community Action per the requests of Brainerd Community Action, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So the two changes are Brainerd Community Action wants our, their board liaison, currently Kevin Stunek, to be a voting member. He was not a voting member before. This changed it, so he will be a voting member. And secondly, they wanted to leave the old language from the old contracts that the city will provide them an office space. And they're currently at Bremer, but they don't know what the future holds, and they thought maybe they could, you know, come back to City Hall or something if, if Bremer disappears, and we thought that was fair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, I mean, I have a concern, since we may be renovating next door and may be sending that to Region Five, is that who, Chair, yeah, Region Five or somebody, and we may not have space. Are you, are you, what's that?
We got the penthouse. We didn't say what, we didn't say.
No smoking on the roof, or in the metronome.
Water tower is being refurbished.
Chairman Johnson, I got to be direct, are you have no concern that we're not going to have space for them if they decide to exercise that? And I'm concerned enough that I would like to know where that space is going to be before I vote for this.
Yeah, penthouse, broom closet, I don't know, maybe we could, maybe we work out a deal with Region Five to have them have the broom closet, closet out back. I don't foresee it as being a problem. I'm not concerned with change, that, that we, I don't think we need to change the contract language. So that's where I'm at. If you need to vote no because I don't have an office identified, I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day. O'Day?
Soaking up the sun.
He is. Is he frozen?
Blender repair.
He's not blinking.
Yes.
All right, got it. Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Hear me?
No, yes, we hear you.
We have three yeses from Mike.
Three, yeses from O'Day.
That motion passes, please proceed, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is authorized library entrance door project and request funds from Kitchy, and the motion is to authorize the approval of the Brainerd Public Library Board front entrance door project requesting $31,495 in funds from Kichigami Regional Library Reserve Funds designated for the Brainerd Public Library, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingleyton. Chairman Johnson.
So these, these funds designated for Brainerd Public Library from Kitchy are the, this 31 is part of the pot of money that Mary Colt brought to our attention that Kitchy has? This is the first project we're doing, or the library is doing with those funds, and it's making their doors, automatic doors out front?
Mr. Chair, does Kitchy spend money?
They do now.
Well, this is a request, correct? It's not a mandate.
Right.
So I'm, and I'm dead serious, I'm not familiar that Kitchy has ever given money back.
Well, that's why they had that huge pot of money, pretty much.
Or still have and haven't spent a dime of it.
Still haven't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly going to vote for this.
I'll never get if we don't ask.
I'm not looking for the doors tomorrow.
Put four doors in, then.
Yeah, that's right, and a convertible top. Any further discussion?
Uh-oh, the money person wants to talk.
Yes, Connie Hillman.
Thank you, Chair.
You'd get a lot more attention if you're on mine.
This is just a request for the Kichigami Board to put it on their meeting so that, so this is like another step in the process of getting the funds.
I get that.
That's why he's not putting the doors in tomorrow.
My question stands.
They're backordered for six years.
Have they ever spent any money? Of course, they must have, right? Mary Colt would.
On the roof.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
The next up is a formality of, the motion is to adopt attached resolution to elect the standard allowance available under the revenue loss provision of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Thank you, Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, this is just the formal adoption of the resolution that we discussed at a workshop of what, where to go with this, with these ARP funds, and this is just, this is where we told them to go, this is where we are.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingleyton.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes. Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Final item on my agenda is an update on the money we requested to be returned to the city from Lakes Area Media Collaborative, and as of today, there is no update.
Second.
End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 7 is unfinished business. Item 7A is a call for applicants. We'll start with the Honorable Mayor Bedell.
Thank you very much. The following applications are available on the city's website, www.cibrainerd.mn.us/boards/ Cable TV Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2022, one term expiring 2024. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License, Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. We also have two spaces available on Economic Development Authority. We'd like to get those filled. Those are for one term expiring 2022 and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have one term on the Planning Commission expiring 2023 and one position on the Ad hoc Committee Water Tower Fundraising Committee. So you get in right when the good stuff is happening on the water tower. Item 8 is new business. Item 8A is a first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1529. This is an ordinance amending Section 1200 of the Brainerd City Code pertaining to intoxicating liquor. Anybody wish to add anything on this as to?
I'll take it, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Thank you. Connie Hillman.
We discussed this at our last council meeting, that the city had received a couple of calls from people that wanted to have more than one on-sale liquor licensing, licenses, and so staff brought forth the proposed draft changes, the ordinance, as discussed at the last council meeting, that a person cannot have more than one class, one on-sale intoxicating liquor. That would be our bars classification. So this would now allow people to have more than one Class 2, which is our restaurant, or Class 3, which is our bowling alleys.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Finance Director Hillman. Hearing none. Gabe Johnson, we're in the 400s for pages.
413.
413, thanks for that. We need, you wouldn't mind at the next meeting if you'd like to, you know, at the rounds, at the fights?
I just got my computer to work.
Next option.
I am so glad you know that's a computer. We've really made some strides.
It was there, and then it went restart. It started all over again, and I started this.
All right, back to page 1 for Stunick. All right, so this is looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1529. So move.
Second.
An ordinance amending Section 1200 of the Brainerd City Code pertaining to intoxicating liquor and dispensing with the actual reading of the ordinance, which a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. We have a motion to conduct the first reading by Pritchett, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll on the first reading.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks for the final reading. Item 9 is the public forum. This is the time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So if we haven't discussed what you're here for tonight, and you wanna let the council know what your thoughts are, this is your time. In the room, anybody have anybody? Sean, we have anybody online?
Nope, it's Mike.
Okay, so we open the public forum at 8:00. We'll close it at 8:02 and move on to staff reports. We'll start off on my, my left. Chris Hubert, no. Jay, anything? No? From the legal department?
No, sir.
From the Community Development Director. How many more days?
Last meeting.
Three.
Well, we're gonna have those special meetings.
Up in Breezy or where?
At the poolside. O'Day's gonna show us how to make Bahama Mamas.
They have Board of Appeals on Wednesday, if you wanna show up for that. I hear Ideal Township went for six hours.
You know I do. City Engineer Public Works.
I do have something really quick, though, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes. I was just kidding about giving you the floor.
Just reminding, the Planning Commission is meeting this Wednesday, April 20th, at 6:00 PM here in the City Council Chambers. They will be considering some of the parcels that might be having a significant zoning change as part of that meeting. That's what the council had them send back to look at. Also, 'cause Paul was on vacation, the Mississippi Landing Trailhead, we did have the bids on that project opening on Thursday. We had some bids that did seem to come in favorably. The project management team is meeting tomorrow evening to discuss the bids, and then the park board should be considering the bids next Tuesday. And then the last thing I have, as this is my last meeting with all of you, again, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the last roughly three and a half years I've been able to serve the City of Brainerd and the people of Brainerd. It's been an absolute privilege, and it'll always be a fond memory and a good times here, and I will still be around, still have a Brainerd address, waiting for the day that this council decides to annex me, and I get to come in and fight you. That's all I have.
Was that a request for annexation?
That means I could live up at Breezy. I'm in.
If you wanna live in Breezy, I got some property to sell.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you got candy for me, too.
City Engineer Public Works Director Sandy.
I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Finance Director Hillman.
Just that the auditors will be at City Hall to start fieldwork next week.
Well, you might have topped David Chansky for excitement. IT GIS Director Sean Strong, no?
Nothing to add.
Well, anything from the Police Department Chief? Who is, anybody online, Sean? Okay.
He's kinda online.
Yeah, and we're not really acknowledging him anymore, since he ran this meeting an hour longer than it needed to be.
Probably got his feet in the water.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, I do have a couple of things in front of you. You should have a copy of the school dedications. ISD 181 is doing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 dedications between April 25th and May 20th. Those are in front of you, so if you are able to attend, I'm sure that the school district would appreciate it. On this Thursday, County Administrator Tim Hul and I were asked by Mrs. Mary Cope to help the Kitchy Board with a retreat, so Tim and I will be up there for the day with the Kitchy Board.
Hope courses and trust falls.
Draft, we do have a draft agreement with CLC for the cable TV. Cable TV Advisory Committee will be meeting tomorrow to start talking about that. Hope to have a draft of the council at one of the meetings in May, so you can look forward to that. Still with the goal to be on cable sometime this summer, so just stay tuned for that. There is also a Charter Commission meeting as well. That is on Wednesday, the 20th, at 4:00 here in Council Chambers, and that is it for me.
Thank you, City Administrator. We'll start down at, let's start with online, SP&amp;W Chair Mike O'Day.
Thanks for dealing with me, guys. I'm not sure how good my connection is, but I really have nothing to add. It's just time for me to go make one of those Bahama Mamas and jump in the hot tub.
Put some suntan lotion on your red.
It doesn't work on me.
The rest of us, the rest of us after the meeting are gonna go shovel your sidewalk. You can trust us.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Dave Pritchett?
Hey, I just wanted to say that it is amazing, looking where we were when we first discussed the historic water tower, to actually be putting a roof on that. You know, congratulations, citizens of Brainerd, and everybody that stepped up, mayor, the committee, the Water Tower Committee, it's incredible. I mean, when you talk to most people, when we started having chunks fall off of it, they thought it was pretty much on the clock until it was gone. Make the big flashlight out of it, laid down, that sort of thing, so, great, that's awesome.
Thank you. Taz Erickson?
Nothing tonight.
Gabe Johnson?
Oh, yeah, I've got a few things. Yeah, I wanna thank, say thank you to the Rotary and the NP Center for the Easter egg event at Gregory Park this past weekend. It was, it was a little bit chilly, but it was a lot of fun for all the families out there. I did have a department head ask me to add something to the agenda today, so I just wanna remind all the department heads, I meet with Connie and Jennifer on Wednesday